May, no, the June 2nd meeting of the Sinsbury zoning commission. This makes you're all in the right place. Our agenda starts tonight with the question of alternates. And right now, that's easily solved. All three of our alternates are absent tonight. So we're gonna be a little short-handed, but our regulations only require four members be in place to vote. We have four, oh no, we have five. Yeah, we have five, so we're awesome. And the next order of business is approval of the minutes of May 5th.
I'm sorry, it was commotion out there.
I forgot to say something about do something.
We're good. I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I'm the one running around.
So minutes for May, any comments, corrections, or other considerations that the commissioners want to raise?
No.
None?
Hearing none. Going once, going twice. And I'll accept the minutes as they were submitted without objection. That takes here the minutes. And our main business tonight is we have two public hearings. The first one has to do with, well.
You wanna read it?
Sure.
Yeah, you could read the.
First one is application ZC number 25-07 of Simsbury Real Estate Holdings LLC applicant for a text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulation, section three, residential districts, and section 17 definitions to allow an additional use special recreation area in the R40, R80, and R160 zones.
Thank you. I see Terry sitting right there. I didn't know if you wanted to say something for us.
So no, I mean usually text amendments come from staff, but tonight we have, you know, a private sector petitioner, and so I would just suggest turn it over to Terry. And we do have a couple of slides, but I think she can talk through it. And you do have copy, a full copy of the draft text amendment that the applicant submitted in front of you.
Good evening, Terry Anhan, Principal LEDAPC. We're the land planners for the Tower Ridge property. Over the last year and a half, two years, we've been working with the transition of the Tower Ridge property into a something that isn't a golf course. And as that happens, we were butting up with staff against what the definition and what the zoning applied to that particular property was and how it works. So we've been working with Brittany and George to come up with an alternative. And believe me, just even the simple word "special recreation area" probably took us about three months to come up with how to describe it. Okay. But the idea, we took essentially the criteria from the original golf course and merged it into something with a few other things from the regulations and put it together into something that better reflected what is happening on that property and what is proposed to happen. The idea is that the special recreation area would apply to properties of a certain size. It would allow for outdoor sports and uses. I mean fundamentally, it's a recreation area. But it would also include mixed uses, which is, you know, really hard concept for zoning to get into. It likes to have one thing, you know, in each place. And that obviously doesn't happen there. And it won't happen there because of all of those sort of financial restrictions that are required. Each things are seasonal, you know, it's a very different sort of entity. And so we tried to come up with something that would make sense. We have setback restrictions, we have lot restrictions, we have use restrictions. We're trying to define what it is that we're trying to do here. And those are all defined in the red in your text. We did go to the planning commission, and they asked for one additional one, which is now considered number nine, which is in my copy is purple. I don't know what it is in your copy, but it's
red.
It's another different red.
No, it should be.
Oh, okay, it's all the same.
Just regular red.
Yeah, okay, all right. And I think we were able to put something together that makes sense, is respectful of the area and neighborhood, and I'm more than happy to talk to you. So the process would be, we get the text amendment, and then we'll be coming in for a special exception to apply this zone or this thing to the property. And we've got some site plan changes and things like that that we'll be doing at the same time. So you'll see us again after this.
How many public hearings or site plan?
It'll be a special exception. So it will be a public hearing, yes. Yep, after that. Yeah, thank you. So but after that, once we get the special exception, we get this to apply to the property and we get them sort of what we're doing, we're working on master plan, all in place. Then after that, any subsequent changes will go in under just site plan.
Mr. Chairman, let me just, it may have not gotten to the copy that you have. So we added essentially what is a number nine, and then there's a number 10. But number nine is what was recommended by the planning commission, which says, other than for maintenance and operational purposes, motorized recreational vehicles such as, but not limited to, go-karts, motorcycles are not allowed.
I saw that, but it's not listed here.
It's not.
I have many more.
I passed the revised one out, but that's the only revision that, that's it. Please go right. Thanks, Terry.
So Terry, are there specific new restrictions of any sort of property that you want to point out that are a little bit here?
Well, okay, so there are setback restrictions for different, the active versus passive uses, which are distinctive. And those have to do with adjacent to the various different properties.
When you go as inherited, that you're suggesting those are new?
No, they're composite. Oh, sorry.
I have it, well, I have it on my phone.
Yeah, so some of them were, they had setbacks, but these are bigger.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So they've, setbacks have been extended. Is there any uniform extension or just?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Because it's a big property and it made sense, so. The other elements have to do with, let's see, what else?
I think one of the more important ones, the minimum lot size
Yep.
has to be 15 acres or more.
Come up with that.
Part of that had to do with the size of the property itself, but in general, we went, because the parcels are 19 acres on each side, or there's more, one on 19 acres the other side because it refers to both sides of the road.
And that makes up what was the golf course property?
Yep, correct. But it's more than that. It's another 30 acres on the mountain side. But so we had just come up, that was a number that made sense, I think, from in terms of other properties because, you know, as a text change, it does apply to other properties potentially. So we were trying to come up with a reasonable number. Plus, you want to have a big enough property that, because you're dealing with outdoor music, you're dealing with a number of things, you want a big property that this would be applied to.
Does anybody have questions or comments?
Yeah. Well, one thing, you jumped out at me. You're not quite correct to say that this zoning commission is not interested in mixed use. In fact, you would.
Oh, no, no, not the commission, zoning in general.
Zoning in general, okay.
Sorry, no, no, if I said commission attached it, I apologize.
And you mean mixed, not residential and commercial?
Not residential, commercial. I mean different kinds of uses. Like recreation is different than the restaurant use.
Well, that was, well, that was my next question, because you had mentioned that term mixed use, but I was, I don't see any.
Yeah, I apologize. Mixed use has two different purposes. One was to, just a generalized one, and then the one we're more used to seeing inside, which is commercial, recreational, and residential. That's not what we're talking about here.
Yep.
Many uses, excuse me.
Gotcha. I love the inclusion of, it's giving me flashbacks. Where is it? Something about seasonal food trucks.
I know.
Beautiful. So yeah, I mean, that's one like, so it's interesting, because I work in the life sector now. The way that the, the way like writing new laws and writing new regs that works there and here is really different, and it's, it's just funny to see. Because it's, so yeah, we have the food truck thing. Is that gonna be a legal problem for us? Is that gonna jive with our existing law when it comes to food trucks? If like Justice Zone had them?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I don't have my lawyer hat on tonight necessarily, but as a planner, my planner hat is, you know, I think you can carve out, I mean, this is for this kind of use.
For this kind of use.
You're saying for this kind of use, we will allow these kinds of things. Remember, what we're really trying to do here is that, the fact is, is that this property has evolved over time.
Yeah.
Right? It's evolved, sometimes without formal approvals, but, you know, it's become what it's become, and it's not a golf course with a restaurant anymore. And so we were trying to tailor the wants and essentially the expansion of the applicant to be able to provide for what's there today. I mean, they've had food trucks for years there at events.
Right.
You know, they've had, you know, they just opened the ice cream place because the ice cream place existed when there was a golf club there.
Yeah.
They have a restaurant because there was a golf club there, but healing hands there or healthy meals or whatever.
Yeah.
You know, and there's other things. So that's, we were trying to, we're trying to allow for this particular property, which quite frankly is quite popular and it's been quite successful, certainly on the collective side.
Right.
Folks go there every week, and so it's, you know, I think it's some, I think it's something that should be clearly defined and defined in a, you know, in a particular zoning category. And that way, the expansion where they want to add pickleball courts, all that stuff can be done, you know, by, through that review process. And I think the special exception piece lets us get the special exception, public hearing, you know, and a site plan to go with it, so you can get that kind of feedback.
Does this impact the healing meals or the, does that, like, because would they operate outside of like, or the hours that are listed here, or is that only, that's only for major events, I guess?
That's only for major events.
So it could still be open to do other things, yeah, okay.
Correct, yep.
And the other piece is that we know, and this will be part of the special exception, but this is why we defined it. We know that there has been some interest or even concern about noise and hours of operation for the bands and those kinds of things. And I think that special exception process will allow the commission to consider some conditions that can help monitor and mitigate those impacts.
It's not an open-ended thing at that point.
Yeah, I want to go back to the food trucks for a second. You're not, you're not.
I'm not done with that yet.
You're not expecting to change the current business model with respect to food trucks, right?
Right.
I think we saw food trucks as accessory, right?
Yeah. I mean, they usually, there's a, there's a place, it actually was approved on the site plan for the collective. There's parking for food trucks.
Right.
Yeah.
It says that from the.
Clarify that. Thank you, Terry.
No, I mean.
Short distance.
Kind of a question.
But what did that mean? That was a space for the owner-operator? Do you have a place for his truck?
No.
But that's a place for them to bring trucks in, especially.
To bring a food truck in, too, yep.
Regarding the lighting, we've had several conversations about dark skies and being mindful of migration patterns and things like that. And I noticed the lighting says it should not emit outside the property boundaries onto a budding properties, but I'm just wondering what kind of lights are being installed?
So at the moment, there's this sort of mishmash of lighting. We've been changing all of them to dark sky LEDs, but it's a process. It's not something that they are able to do all at once. Yep, and anything new is going in as LEDs.
Is that, is that, is that lighting thing consistent with our codes?
We don't have a
We don't have any.
a dark sky lighting or as of yet.
It's, I'm just.
It's coming.
And we talked about it.
Right.
It's on the list.
Just light shall be contained to the property. Well, if you can see the light, it hasn't been contained to property.
Well, this is a way to measure.
Yeah.
Declare from the property lines.
Noise, do we, we don't have any noise ordinance in this town. Is this the only thing with a noise ordinance?
We do, there is a noise, mention of noise restrictions in the industrial zone.
In the industrial?
Especially, there's a special event use allowed in the industrial zone. Called as a text amendment, I think, two years ago. And they mentioned, they mentioned decibel level in that.
A special event use in the industrial zone? I don't remember that.
Yes, it was mainly, it was brought forward because of the mill in Terriffill.
Terriffill.
Yeah. They did a lot of weddings.
I remember that now. Yes, I do, okay. Right, so it's for vents, but I mean, we don't yell at Ensign Bigford when they do an explosion or or construction sites or anything. So I mean, I would. Not that I, not that I love the idea of like a big loud music thing happening, but I mean, if it, this would be the only zone that has a 75 decibel at the property line.
It's the only place that has outdoor concerts. And that's what we were trying to get our arms around.
Pack up.
It is the only place for, I mean, this is, it's not just a guitar player on the, you know, an acoustic guy on the porch.
Okay.
It is a little bit different, and so that's what we were trying to manage.
All right. So but if that's consistent with you, that's the performing arts center?
That's right.
Reported by.
Besides the performing arts center.
Well, that's, yeah.
What was it saying?
Well, that's all, I'm trying to make sure that we're not creating, and I'm assuming you guys had a hand in writing some of this.
And in part, you know, really, I mean, Terry did most of the, most of the heavy lifting on this, so we were just trying to, you know, to help.
We don't have any objections to any of these things.
No, no, that's great. I, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't like singling out this one property with like a, that you were maybe overly burdening yourself with regs that we don't apply to literally anyone else.
Your question is.
Um, but seems like you're, you managed to avoid that. Is there a reason overnight lodging isn't allowed? It couldn't be a camp? Because remember, while this is your, you have your facility in mind or your property in mind, like, is there a reason we don't have, like, we wouldn't use this for like a campsite or something?
I think it's a slippery slope. My only thought is like, no, like, would it be okay to have a campground in Simsbury, probably? But the idea that you're gonna have concerts with camping is a different vibe
That's true.
than just the what it is now. Because I had a similar thought about like, when you think about, oh, like a little cute campground
Right.
is different than camping at a concert.
You're from Vermont.
Just saying, it is, it's different. It's different than having camping. Yeah, it's different than having a camping concert event, like, and I think, because I'm sorry.
That's good, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't threaten me with a good time.
Same.
Um, parking noise. Sorry. Yeah, you did a really great job making all this read really well, with no LCO to help you out, too. So this is great. Anyone else can ask questions. I'm still.
Thank you. I'm interested in, there probably is something there already on this, but with the kitchen. I'm thinking when I read about these temporary buildings that are, you know, that expression is wound through this. The temporary buildings tend to have a special or higher need for oversight when it comes to electrical supply and electric, you know, everything. And when you talk about determining, it sounds like almost on a case-by-case basis, parking, adequacy of parking. I'm wondering if the police and fire and the building official have been involved in this to this point?
I think we're not talking about
Or is there a vision?
Temporary, we're not talking about temporary food. It's seasonal food or the food trucks, which bring their own power supply. I think, you know, when you're talking about like a pop-up of some kind, that was not something.
No, I'm talking about different things. There's a kitchen that the people are using, burnstowers are using.
But that's inside the building
Yeah.
and is fully got a building official, you know, building department sign on.
So they're periodically inspected by the health department?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Well, good answer. So the health department is involved in the property.
Oh, yeah, and the building.
As the thing expands, there's no distinct reason not to continue to engage appropriate inspection.
Of course, it would need, anything that happens here would need to meet, it's not just you guys. There's health code, there's the building department, you know, but and that, right now, there is no thought for additional elements related to food. But like, for example, the ice cream had to go through full building review, got a health department review, because you got to have, it's not just electricity, it's water, sewer, you know, and do we have everything?
I know, those are just my examples. I'm not trying to limit your concern, Terry.
Yep, yeah.
But I'm just trying to find out what's going on.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's.
How much of this is new and how much is just what we're already dealing with?
Yeah, no, now our proposal is to do pickleball courts and a mini golf. So that's kind of where we're at at the moment.
Yeah, and then when it comes to determining parking adequacy for 500 plus, whatever the numbers are, who's gonna do that, or is it already done?
Well, to a certain extent, we've already done an initial, you know, we have a surprising amount of parking on site. But honestly, one of our next applications with the pickleball and everything is for a formalized overflow parking area, so we'll be adding some more parking spaces.
There still is an intention in the future to judge the need based on attendance or something?
Yeah, it's, so what really happens there is that, you know, on a Tuesday at 2 o'clock, there's not much going on, and it's gonna depend on if it's nice weather. So it's really spotty. It's not a nice, consistent parking generation that you get like with an office building or something like that. So it's, they can modulate, and they do sort of self-regulate based on the parking. Because everyone knows, and it's right here in the regulations, thou shalt not park on that street. You know? One of those things, we want to make sure it's very clear, and I think all of the tenants have been very careful not to make sure that does not happen.
Well, the other piece of that, Mr. Elliott, is that because frankly, this lays the groundwork for a site plan and special exception application. You know, we plan to do the math on the parking to the best of our ability. You know, it's again, the first time, we haven't had iterations of site plans since the golf course landed there, you know, decades ago. This gives us that opportunity.
Great. I'm just trying to understand what's going on and what the vision is. I'm not trying to test the merits of the effort that's gone into it.
Oh, good questions.
When you talk about temporary buildings, and there's a six-month limit, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on what this, who tells them it's like, you know, was there an example of October or something, or something to October?
I think for the temporary structures, and Brittany and, I think we were, I think at that time, we said such as, but I think we were concentrating on tents as the temporary structure. I don't know that your plan is to have other temporary structures.
No, no, and this word, these words come out of that special large event thing.
Right, right, we've used it.
So it's consistent with what you do for the meadows and other places as well. So it's, that's where some of that language came from.
And those are permitted and limited by the building department.
Right.
Yeah.
And reviewed in that fashion.
I mean, would something like a stage be in that category, sorry?
Well, that, I mean, stages can require building permit.
So whose job is it at the end of six months? Joe's? Who's gonna go over and tell him to get that?
Yes, it is a zoning, it is an enforcement action, yes. And we, and we've had a number of times where we've had to alert property owners that your tent's still up. We have done that, so we're familiar with that process.
Great. Sounds like the precedents are in place. I think that was all my questions. If anybody else has concerns they want to raise. And if there's nothing else.
As a reminder, it is a public hearing.
I know, I was just gonna deal with it. If there's no more questions right now from the commissioners, we'll take some time for public comments. If the members of the public that are with us have any comments, feel free to join the discussion if you'd like. Do you want to come up to the podium?
Do you want us to?
If you don't, I'm getting a good recording.
I do. Me? Not have something to say?
Come up properly.
Go, you go first.
Just off the top of my head.
Start with your initial address for the record.
Ellen Gilbert, 126 Hot Metal Street, Unit 3E. I just wondered, the only time I've been to that golf course was to, as a guest to the swimming pool. Is the swimming pool still there or is it gone? Excuse me, Terry Hanigan, it's gone. And?
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
Feel good?
Yes. How about skinny? Hi, Lori Boyko, 1500 Cursed Road. My only comment or caution is in applying a new use townwide text amendment when looking at a single property. And I brought this concern up when we were looking at a change of use for the Simsbury Community Farm industrial property, and whether that change of use should be applied to one single property or whether it should be applied to every property within that zone in town. And I tried to look on the Simsbury GIS map and get a feel for what was R40 and where were 15-acre lots or larger within that R40 zone. And that was really difficult for me to do in a short period of time because so much of the town is R40, that this really opens up so many locations within the town, provided there's a 15-acre lot, which I realize there's not a ton of those. It would be better to understand where those are to this change. And so in many ways, when zones with broad uses leave doors open for things the town hasn't necessarily envisioned, but then have limited ability to control once that use is overlaid on everything in that zone. And not exactly the same, but the Silverman property is sort of a good example of that. We created this sort of mixed-use zone envisioning one thing, and they came in with something else. And we said, yeah, that doesn't really work for us. And we have a limited ability with only limited parameters to control that. And R40 by definition means one-acre lots minimum. There's a lot of homes in these areas that might have some big parcel behind them that would end up with something unexpected with outdoor music, that has food service and retail and office. And that's sort of like putting a commercial zone into a residential zone. So it can be a backdoor to creating what amounts to commercial use squeezed into residential areas. I think what they've done over on that property has served the town well. I think it's been a phenomenal alternative use of the golf course when that was a dilemma. I don't have anything in particular adverse to say about that location or the things that they want to do there. I don't live in that area. I don't know what residents in that area feel, but, you know, they could have been here tonight, too. I just caution the zoning commission in general about making sweeping townwide zoning changes for individual, you know, to accommodate an individual use or parcel or change. Thank you.
You did say that, you've already made that cautioning effort to the zoning commission in the past.
On a different kind of lot, yes.
Well, I mean, that's a good point about making sure that this use works with everything, obviously that the applicant has their property in mind, which is one of the reasons I was asking so many questions. Yeah, I would have been interested to hear. I, the 15-acre thing is interesting to me. I think it would require a little bit of research to actually see what that is and is not, like what that actually means, like what actual R40, 15-acre lots we have.
But this is also a special exception.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I did inquire to the town, the tax assessment office to filter down R40, R80, and R160 zones of 15 or more. There's about 40 properties that would apply, about eight commercial, the rest are residential. Some are the things like Ethel Walker, the school.
I would also, I did, I didn't go this, I actually went through the map and counted things. More than half of them are R160 lots. More than half of them are R six, are R one sixty lots, because that just is the way that it worked out. There's very few R forty lots that would, this would apply to, if any, I'm not, I'm sure there might be one or two. But it they they, that that's kind of how it came to this number.
Brittany, did you say that some of the R one sixty lots were residential?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, they're all, they're all residential.
Or residential. No, but there, I mean, there are some classified as commercial.
Oh, yes, there are some.
Like the school and the pickleball and things like that, but, yes.
And I, it's funny, fifteen acres, I mean, I I don't, I don't disagree, I don't agree that this needs to necessarily even be fifteen acres. Obviously, like live music should be a relatively large property, a single pickleball court wouldn't have to be. I would have no reason to say that that use has to be on a fifteen acre lot. And, you know, I mean, having some commercial within a, like, uh, within residential is not the end of the world for me either. But, um, yeah, just just thinking about, more thinking out loud about what are the ramifications of some of the other properties.
I think we were thinking with, you have to have some parcel of size, frankly, in order to meet set, the 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 much larger setbacks.
A setback, that's true, a setback form, yeah.
You know, and that, you know.
They're gonna need park, parking.
You need, you need to provide for the parking at the.
That's true.
Man, I don't know that we would want a standalone pickleball business. I mean, that those have become commercial uses, and so I think they're probably more suited.
Yeah.
But I, but I, you know, I think the saving grace, and it's really one of the only tools that we have, is the is the special exception process,
We already have one.
which will allow you to determine whether this, any particular location makes sense and is compatible with surrounding properties and does all those those kinds of things for your criteria.
Oh, yeah, if it's if it's overly restrictive and literally only one property can make use of it, we can always change it a little later to see if, you know, if someone with fourteen acres has a perfectly reasonable thing, we can, you know, always make that that text amendment. So, yeah, that, I'm 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 sold personally, I think it's, seems like a good idea.
Anybody else have comments?
Um, well, I just made mine that I think because of the special exception that allows it to not be a blanket.
Yeah.
Uh, application across every zone without. Well, but. Questions for the public? And then if none, we'll close the public hearing.
That's true, we could, yeah.
Okay, and all right, did either of you have anything else you wanted to say?
I agree with Lori.
Thank you. If that's it for public input, then we'll have closed the public hearing, so if I could have a motion to.
I move that we close the public hearing on application ZC twenty-five dash zero seven.
And second for the.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Then we close the public hearing, we may have a vote. So, uh, back to the issue at hand. Any further discussion from the commissioners? Comments?
I think you probably don't have a draft motion, first, you've got a draft motion on you, on the screen.
Oh, yeah. We have a draft motion somewhere, page two.
Up on the screen.
Yeah, I hear that.
It may be in the status quo as well, if you have a status quo. It is.
Anybody wanna make the commission approve or tinker with the wording to make a motion to not approve?
I mean, I'll move. I'll move that the zoning commission approves ZC number twenty-five dash oh seven of the Simsbury Real Estate Holdings LLC applicant for a text amendment to the Simsbury zoning regulations, section three, residential districts and section seventeen definitions to allow an additional use, special recreation area in the R forty, R eighty and R one sixty zones based on the finding that the amendment is consistent with the policies and action steps in the plan of conservation and development. The text amendment is effective June second, twenty twenty-five, pending the statutory appeal period.
Second, so we have a motion and a second to approve the application as we received it. Any further discussion?
I think this is really well-written, I'm very impressed that someone from the public was able to come to us with a a text amendment that is so coherent and makes a lot of sense, yeah, fantastic work.
You're here, so why don't we take a vote then, and all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. And this application passes, so you're unanimous. So, you're all.
Thank you very much. Kevin Casey from the Tower Ridge apologized, he was having cataract surgery today, so it's not allowed to go anywhere.
Terry, I haven't mentioned this before, but let me do that, I mean, here, on TV. Terry Hanigan, in from twenty twelve to twenty sixteen, worked with a group of veterans on developing the Veterans Memorial that's over on the other side of the library. We dedicated it twenty sixteen, and we just had our seventh Memorial Day over there. So it's, and we still get comments from the public, just moving. And it's it's quite an experience to be there every year. I have memories of having gone through the process with Terry, who donated so much of her time and probably never expected torture and aggravation, but she survived, but it was well done and and I hope that probably won't see it when it's there for the hundredth year birthday, but we do expect it's gonna be there at least that long, so, thank you. And the families who's who's responsible for the named pavers that are on that deck. Every time you see people, they're looking around, entering, that's, I mean, it's it's rewarding. It was a great thing that we did for the town, so, thank you. Okay, so we're back on that and we're in public hearing number two.
Application ZC number twenty-five dash zero eight of the Simsbury zoning commission applicant for a text amendment to the zoning regulations, section ten and section seventeen. The Simsbury Center Zone, section six point two, and the Hartford Simsbury Form Based Code, section seven, incorporate state-enabled electric vehicle charging station infrastructure requirements.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
About this, Jerry.
Yeah, this is, so this is Steph generating, this is a text amendment that really comes out of the part of Public Act twenty-two, twenty-five approved by the legislature several years ago, which was, it was termed the Connecticut Clean Air Act. And in in that act, which is a wide-ranging act on on climate and other things, but there is, there's essentially an electric vehicle infrastructure parking requirement that is embedded in that document. And we thought that since, you know, when developers are trying to figure out how much parking they have to have and and do those kinds of things, that that those kind of site plan-related requirements, even if they come out of state, they ought to be embedded in our own zoning regulations. It's just easier and it's 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 easy for them not to miss it. So we thought we 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 ought to incorporate the language from the state bill in order to do that. So that's what this amendment does, it incorporate, incorporates that language. Ver- ver- uh, th- this is verbatim, and so we 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 would propose, because we have three different zoning regulations, you have the townwide regs, you have the Hartford Simsbury Form Based Code, you have the, and you have the center zone. So it essentially says that any new site plan or project for a commercial project or multifamily project that has over thirty or more designated parking spaces shall be required to provide electric vehicle charging station infrastructure capable of higher level, anything, level two or higher vehicle charging stations, as in in order to allow for in ten percent of their total spaces. So again, this is not requiring, you know, charging kiosks, it's it's it's, it would require the infrastructure such that the conduit is there, you don't have to, you don't have to tear up the parking lot later, you know, when the market demands these kinds of things. And so, that's what the language says. And then we also incorporate two definitions for our definition section of what exactly, how do we define electric vehicle charging station? And and what the levels mean. So, you we have the draft language, it it really comes straight out of of the code. The only thing we didn't include from the state code was the requirements for state properties. And we thought those folks would know what they're doing when they're developing state properties, so we didn't include that that half paragraph. We're gonna be dealing with a lot of incorporations from 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 the state legislature in the in the coming year or two, or the coming months. So this is a good, it's a good good test case of how we.
No.
How we get to include this.
Yeah, it's funny, it's funny you mention that, because I obviously, I I know which which bill you're talking about. But, um, with this, was this not, why doesn't the state law just go into effect? Why does, was this an opt-in process from the state?
It's not an opt-in process, it's 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 been in effect since PA twenty-two, twenty-five was adopted.
So we essentially just, what, been out of compliance, or were we just, uh, uh, defaulting to the state's law?
Well, we we are defaulting to the state's law, although the statute allows you to require it for a higher percentage by vote. And we we're not proposing that in this.
I see, okay.
But again, I I think it's more about make making sure that site plan regulations are all in the same place.
Right.
No matter who's required.
Yeah, so you're not going to the states and you're.
You know, and then, you know, my staff knows about it, Brittany knows about it and and our engineering staff, but those folks are gonna change over time and somebody might forget. And I think it just allows us to know that it's in our own zoning code. And we see the site plan and we do our site plan review and then we get to say, oh, Mr. Developer, you didn't include this as part which required, section five from our our site plan requirements.
Sure, that, uh, do you know, Fan, how many of the newer large developments, say, the Hartford, the old Hartford facility or the development north of by the Big Wyatt, you know, how many of those have electric vehicle charging stations in them?
So, um, I I don't know, I I don't know if if any, I do know that, so when we, or before I got here, you were through a process where we we transitioned the old motel to a to a residential apartment uses. That infrastructure was put in there and they actually put in a kiosk, I think, or two. So that happened, that happened there.
Did they feel compelled by the markets?
I think that was on their own, I, yeah, I do, I do.
I used to walk my dog in, I think, so.
I do. So we have mentioned it to developers, um, you know, as part of, you know, as part of our conversations, as a kind of a negotiate, have you considered doing this, it's a good idea, but but, you know, now we don't have to do it, because it's a requirement.
No, I mean, obviously, this is prospective, right, so.
It is, it is, I mean, it assumes.
And the concern about making it retroactive, say, is just the cost of.
Yeah, you have to dig up the.
You have to dig up.
It is a cost.
I mean, it's a cost, but yeah, it it does create kind of an odd situation where we have very large developments in town that don't have.
Yeah.
Electric vehicle charging stations in place, and then we acquire newer ones to have.
Kind of progress, right?
Yeah, right.
What'd you say?
Progress.
Yeah.
Was ten percent the standard that was used to arrive at the number we have out in front of the.
No, I think those, you know, those charging stations have been here for some time, although they're no longer here. They're no longer operable.
Oh, I just see the car charging over here in the front.
Correct. They are no longer operable.
They're not working. Really?
There's a number of reasons they're not operable.
I'm sorry. Okay.
But but I believe there's there's there's, there's a plan to upgrade them and properly charge for them over time.
I mean, I think I'm in favor of this, I think it's really a positive, a really a step in the right direction.
It is a public hearing.
Any other comments before we hear from the public?
No.
You're welcome. Any of you like to, or both, add to the discussion on this?
Oh, yeah.
Lori Boyko from fifteen O Cursed Road. Just to make things simple, it it's not even about whether we want to or we don't want to. The statute says, a municipality shall require each new construction of a commercial building or multi-unit residential building with thirty or more designated parking spaces for cars or light duty trucks to include electric vehicle charging infrastructure. And it goes on, you can opt to do more, but the municipality shall, which means they must, require this. So it's not even like we get to decide, I think what's happening is whether or not we're gonna put language in our zoning regulations that mirror the state, but whether we put it in there or we don't put it in there, we still have to do it. We still have to require it. The only thing that I would say is, like George said, there's a lot of things like this that are going to keep happening from the state, whether they're moving forward, you know, whether they're like new regulations, whether they're taking away some regulation, or whether they're changing wording or tweaking what's in existing regulations. So, it might be worth considering slightly different language that states any new build will comply with state regulations and then have a packet that keeps updating the state regulations instead of the zoning commission having to keep making specific wording insertions into our zoning regs. Because then if they change this, or make it say that it's not just the infrastructure, it's the units, or if they change it and say it's gotta be more than, every time they do that, you've got to come change the zoning regulations. So there may be some other more generalized way of making sure that it says we're gonna comply with the state. That's it.
Ellen, did you wanna say anything? Okay. Any further comments, questions? There's a draft motion with this too.
Should probably close the public hearing.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we close the public hearing on application ZC number twenty-five dash zero eight.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. The hearings close then, and we'll move on to final discussion and the vote. So again, is there any further comment or questions? We have a draft motion on the bottom of the second page of the memorandum from George. If somebody would like to consider reading that as stated to approve, or if you wanna tinker with the wording along to not approve to the first, so, you know, somebody like to take that on?
Uh, so, the zoning commission approves ZC twenty-five dash zero eight, a text amendment regarding EV charging station infrastructure as contained in the staff memorandum dated June second, twenty twenty-five, based on a finding that the amendment is consistent with the policies and action steps in the plan of conservation and development. The text amendment is effective June second, twenty twenty-five, pending the statutory appeal period.
I will second that.
And, uh, any further discussion? Go ahead with the vote, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, so we now have a new regulation expanding our expectations of EV charging stations. Thank you, George. That gets us to the end of the agenda that we are working on tonight. Before a adjournment, did you wanna say anything, George? Any other comments?
Yeah, I know, I'm sure that everybody's been, maybe not, maybe everybody. So there's been a lot of talk about the House Bill five thousand and two, five zero zero two, which was passed by the House Legislature late last week and then, and then passed by the Senate, I think on Saturday night, and I think it's headed to the governor's desk. It is an act concerning housing and the needs of homeless persons. And it has a great deal of new requirements and new programs and new planning processes and data collection and zoning changes related to housing and affordable housing. For the zoning commission, there's also stuff related to the planning commission about revising our affordable housing plans under under certain requirements. I am not prepared to speak on it tonight, it's pretty complicated. And I think lots of folks like myself, Brittany and I, and other planners around the state and lawyers are trying to get their arms around what it means and how burdensome is it for for local government. I will send out, I do have, the council of governments produced a certainly a beginning summary of the bill, and I will send that to everybody tomorrow morning or tonight. and I will send that to everybody tomorrow morning or tonight. But I would just say stay tuned and we'll, we'll, we'll get organized and prepare a summary and a kind of an education meeting and talk about its impacts and its effects. So if you have any questions about it, I could try to answer them today, but there's a lot going on.
On a positive note, it comes at a time when we're on the verge of embarking on a redo of our zoning regulations anyway.
That, that timeliness is, is correct.
Yeah, okay.
We're just rolling on in the zoning changes.
Okay.
Thank you, George.
Did anybody else have anything they needed to get to tonight or wanted to, well, together? Okay, then could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay.
For over 40 years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming, education, and live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings and celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions. It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events. They're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us. Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.